Thanks to everyone for joining us. With regard to the agenda, we have two items that we need to add. One is we need to add the discussion on health insurance for the business manager and other confidential district employees. And we could probably maybe add that before our committee reports. Does that make sense?
That makes good sense.
This way, if Stan finishes up with Central Office, he can just move right into that.
Yeah, you got it.
And then we also need to add, and we could put this under transact other legal business, is Adrian wants to speak to us briefly about the V S B A resolutions. And we need to appoint a voting representative for the V S B A annual meeting. So does everyone good with those two changes to the agenda? Okay, excellent. Anyone opposed? Hearing nobody? Okay, we can move on. I need a motion to approve the minutes from September 16th.
So moved.
Thank you, George. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, B J. Are there any corrections to the minutes for September 16th? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please give me a thumbs up. Anyone who is not in favor of approving the minutes, please say no. And I will abstain since I was not here. Okay, we have public input and announcements. Do we have Mr. McFerrin, Dave?
Tammy, I am not seeing Mr. McFerrin on the list of people who are in the meeting or on the pictures that I'm looking at. So it's up to you how we proceed from there. If we pause for a moment, or if we go on and give him a chance, if he pops on, that's entirely up to you.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we, let's see, we're a little ahead of where public input is. So why don't we just move on and we could start our principal updates? And can you let me know when he joins and then we could interrupt that and go back and do the public comment? Okay.
No problem.
So principal updates on reopening. Who would like to go first? How about, how about the first one I see is, oh, Fred raises his hand. Of course Fred wants to go first. Go ahead, Fred.
Adrian punished me last time. She did, she made me go last, so.
Okay, I'll make up for it. There you go.
Not a whole lot of change from the last time we got together. We did go over our opening plan, you know, months ago, and we've been tweaking that along. So I just had a faculty staff meeting today just to go over, you know, in the, in the case that we would open up, you know, November, whenever that we're ready. So we took the time to go through that and answer all the questions. Went well. We've been very diligent on the very few kids that haven't contributed yet. Anything less than, you know, connectivity, which we've, I think, addressed all of those. So we made some in-person visits and that has really helped. And now we're really near 100% across the board with all the, the classes, which is really good. And, you know, the teachers are excited to, to, you know, see the kids in person when and if that happens. And they're just as excited to continue doing what we're doing because they're really perfecting this model. It's working out well for them.
Great. Any questions for Fred? Do you have anything else to add? Did I cut you off? I'm sorry.
No, I, we, a couple of good announcements coming, like we've got Year of the Book, which I mentioned a while ago. But we're going to have some press on that pretty soon. I'll share that with our community. So really good news, yeah.
Excellent. Any questions for Fred? No? Okay, thank you, Fred. Maureen, I know that you joined us. Why don't you go next? I just saw you pop up somewhere. I don't see you on screen though, yet.
Maureen, you're muted right now, just so you know. And hey, for board members, Google Meets has a change to its format. If you look at the three dots in the bottom right of your screen, if you click that and go to change layout, there is a bar across the bottom where you can slide that bar to allow more images on your screen. So it's probably set to 16. If you bump it up to about 30 or so, everyone will magically appear. So just wanted you to be aware of that.
Thanks. Okay, so Timothy is doing well. We're doing a lot better in the fall semester, according to parent surveys and reactions we've gotten. Kids are turning in a lot more work. They're more disciplined and self-disciplined. And they're eating, they're doing well. The, they're anxious to get back to school. We are pretty well-prepared for that, both mentally and with all the materials that we need. In fact, the P T A is even working on, on their trunk or treat celebration, although they're modifying it this year for, you know, for the COVID. So I think that, that we're in a good position to open and we're well-prepared.
Great, thank you, Maureen. Any questions for Maureen? Okay, now that I could see everybody, it's amazing. Thanks, Dave. So we will move on to Dan. How about you?
Can you refrigerate this? Yeah, good evening, everyone. Glad to get a little bit of rain. It seems like it's been a while here, even though in California, I'd expect it to be dry for another two months or so. So I feel like I've acclimated to Vermont and disappointed when it hasn't rained for a few days. But, but yeah, everything's going well in Wallingford. I know teachers are working really hard. And they've been reaching out to families on an individual basis for the ones that were a little bit more challenging to hunt down in live sessions. And I think that open communication's made all the difference, which is, which is important. So as we move into a possibility of reopening, the students will have a better idea of where we're at. And there should be a lot more continuity, just switching from remote into in-person, which I think is important. So everyone's, everyone seems to have it down now. Little tiny glitches that popped up have been ironed out, most of them technology things. Anytime we've had a device go down, they're in the office getting a new device that same day. So I'm glad that that's been working out well. So I feel that in the event that we return in person and have to go back to remote, if that is the case, I think it'll also be a smooth transition and it won't feel like panic mode. But I know that through parent survey results, you know, you have some mixed emotions. There's a lot of people that would be excited to have that in-person interaction with students and families being able to have their student, their kids interact with other kids and their teacher in person. So, you know, in the event that we do that, I think that we're going to have a real successful transition there. And everyone's going to be excited just to be back together. You know, today we were kind of talking about the logistics of reopening. And to be honest, I was a little bit stressed out and anxious at the idea about a month ago of returning in person and having to do the health screening and stuff. But today, as I reflect on it, I, you know, recall the welcome back meetings that we had for the meet and greets that week before school started. And that gave us a good opportunity to practice the health screening. I, you know, all the students and parents were very agreeable to it. And the teachers and Perez and support staff did an excellent job, all hands on deck. And so I think that element has since put me at ease. And so I don't think it's going to be a major concern, not to say that we won't still have our challenges. But I think the overwhelming message is people are looking forward to get back and interacting in person. So we're excited for that to come, hopefully sooner than later.
Great, thanks, Dan. Any questions for Dan? Okay, we're going to take a break because I see that Mr. McFerrin has joined us. Hi, how are you? We, we kind of skipped over waiting for you to join us so that you could have your opportunity to speak. So are you ready to speak?
Oh, yes, I am, actually.
Okay, so you'll have two minutes. And if you're ready, I can start the timer. Go ahead.
Hey, I'm Brian McFerrin. I'm half-Japanese. After the board's decision to fly the Black Lives Matter and Gay Pride flags, I requested equal treatment to display a flag to represent Asian lives for my Asian-American kids in Wallingford Elementary. But unlike Reese Moore, I didn't get a royal welcome. Instead, my Asian kids and my request for a flag were given the brush-off, but that wasn't enough. Internal emails revealed that the Mill River School Board actually investigated me to dig up reasons why they shouldn't honor my request. The same day, Board Member Liv Dilskop had a private conversation with Board Members John McKenna and Maria French and said this about me. Quote, "People are getting out of hand, like there's no established yellow Lives Matter movement or yellow flag that represents the movement." I don't think Brian McFerrin is Asian, but who knows? It sounds like he's being a dick, end quote. I'm a, quote, dick, end quote, for asking for equal treatment. Dilskop's bigotry is, is isolated. That same day, Dilskop spewed her venom on a neighbor on Facebook, denouncing him as a white supremacist because he politely opposed these divisive flags. In another Facebook post, Dilskop slandered a neighbor who voiced his constitutional right to vote down the budget. Quote, "Behold our racist neighbors in plain sight," end quote. And so Dilskop is right. There are racist neighbors in plain sight, and some serve in the Mill River School Board. Look in the mirror, Miss Dilskop. You're a racist and a bigot and capable of impartially serving a school board representing the entire community. You are unfit, and I demand that you resign immediately. And due to their complicity in this act, I also demand that Board Members John McKenna and Maria French recuse themselves from all matters related to any flags or messages such as B L M and Gay Pride. These ugly events occurred under the leadership of Board Chair Tammy Hefferman. I demand that she step down as Board Chair and recuse herself in any aspect of flag-related issues in light of these shocking, unprofessional, and bigoted acts that withdrawn my children from Mill River School System and will not return them until the board's determination, inclusion, respect, and inequity.
Mr. McFerrin, your time is up.
I will bring suit against the board for racial discrimination. Just disturbing to know how Mill River Board members speak about their neighbors.
Mr. McFerrin, thank you, but your time is up.
I will demand that to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment, Dave?
Tammy, we have no other public comment at this time.
Okay, so Mr. McFerrin, thank you for your comment. I would ask that you watch the meeting from the YouTube video and leave the video meeting now. Thank you. So we're going to get back to our principal comments, updates. So we left off with Jody for S M S.
Yeah, so as Fred mentioned, we are making sure that all plans for any version of setting for school are buttoned up. At the beginning of the year, when we started in distance learning, we sent home a distance learning remote handbook for parents. And so in the event, or whenever it is that we return to an in-person setting, we are making sure that we have a handbook for parents that would outline anything that they'd need to know specific to S M S, should the decision be made to return in person. In other exciting events, we, Shrewsbury just got awarded another grant, this time from the World Wildlife Fund, for a Waste Warrior project. And so we'll have $1,000 to apply to our onsite compost project that we're working together with Sage on. That's really exciting. Like Maureen, our P P O is planning for what we can do for a socially-distanced Halloween celebration. So this year, we'll be sending the kids home with bags of candy with a scavenger hunt. And the request of parents is that they hide the candy outside and give kiddos flashlights. And therefore, the kids can go find the candy in their backyards without coming into contact with anyone. But we're still able to add some, some fun in for kiddos. We are getting ready for our virtual parent-teacher conferences coming up next week already, which really, that really came up quickly. And traditionally, for Shrewsbury as an education for sustainability school, in October, we would mark and celebrate the harvest with a harvest festival with locally-produced foods that the kids would cook and do taste tests and do fun activities. Because we can't do that this year, each one of the homeroom teachers has been designing harvest activities that can be done remotely with their kiddos. So we're making the best of things and still finding all the fun that we can.
Excellent. Thank you, Jody. Any questions for Jody? Okay, Tyler, what's going on at high school?
Lots of stuff. We've been really busy. I have to say, our, our teachers have been moving and shaking like you wouldn't believe. Remote learning is going extremely well. We've been having a lot of productive conversations about what our schedule and day is going to look like if and when we return to in-person learning. That's been, like I said, that has been going really well, a lot of good conversation and a lot of good thoughts about how we're going to welcome our kids back into the building once they, once that decision's made. A couple of things about that, our guides department has been in full swing, really making sure we are not letting any kids fall through the cracks. We've been checking with kids on a weekly basis and also dealing with, helping with parents and remote learning. Also, a very big thing with, you know, career and college readiness. If anyone is in touch with S A T programs, whatever, in the state right now, a lot of the testing centers are shut down because of COVID-19. And so we are actively looking at trying to bring in the S A T test for our juniors or seniors for this coming December. We have an in-house M R U-only testing site so that our kids can make sure that test takes place and has, happens before the new year. Also, we're looking at bringing it also into March, albeit quite a distance away. And I'm also going to step on Kim a little bit. I know she's after me on this one. But athletics has been going really well. Our home games have been, have been really fun to watch because our kids are having a great time. You know, they're actually out there, they're having, you know, they're participating in their sports and the smiles and camaraderie and the, you know, just everything. It's, it's been really productive and really positive. So we're having a great start of the year. And I, I know I can speak for all the other principals and everyone else at Mill River that we're really excited to have kids back in place, if and when that is to, to happen. So things have been going very well.
Thanks, Tyler. Any questions for Tyler? Okay, then we'll move on. And we have Kim to give us an update. Hi, Kim.
Hi, good evening. So yes, I'm just going to touch on kind of where we're at for fall right now. Everything looks a lot different than it has in previous years. I'm just starting my seventh year at Mill River, so this year is definitely one that's been totally different than any other years. We're, we're only at 77 athletes participating this, this fall when we really were at about 160. So that's a dramatic difference from years past. We've had to combine a couple of teams to field some teams, and we've had to pull up a couple eighth graders to sustain a varsity team. So just to give you kind of an oversight, we're offering seven or eight programs this fall for athletics. A middle school soccer team, that's a combined boys and girls team. We have a middle school cross-country team, a middle school football team, varsity boys soccer team, varsity girls soccer team, varsity football team, high school cross-country, and we have a high school golf team that we actually have one high school participant and one middle school participant. So they just kind of, really just worked on the dynamics of the game with Jojo Valenti, so they can be ready for, for meets next year. In terms of games being played, because the season is so much shorter, so we would usually start August 10th. We didn't start till September 8th this year. Game-wise, we usually play between 14 soccer games at the varsity level and 10 to 12 at the middle school. And then football, we usually play eight. We have an eight-week season. So this year, soccer both has 10 games for varsity. Football is at nine games because we get to play two games a week with the new 7 V 7 dynamics that they have. Middle school soccer and middle school football, each will play in five games. And cross-country has about six to seven meets, depending on middle school and high school. So just to kind of break it down, we have 49 boys, 7 through 12, participating in athletics and 26 girls. So that number is drastically low as well compared to other years. And just to keep everybody in the loop, we still contract out to the Vermont Orthopedic Clinic to have a full-time trainer on site. So he's at all home events and he's available after, when we're in school, after school. And he's there for all practices to see kids. And they have a pretty good relationship with him, and the coaches make sure to contact him when players are injured or need to be seen so that he is there and available. So looking at going forward, winter, we don't really know what's going to happen. So we're just assuming, you know, everything's going to be the same, but it's not. So we're just waiting for that decision, which hopefully we'll have by November 1st. And then with that decision, I will have to hire a couple sports coaches for the, for the winter season. As most of you are aware, our varsity boys basketball coach passed away this summer. So we'll have to hire a new boys varsity basketball coach. So we kind of just have that on hold right now, waiting to hear from the governor's task force how that's going to look. That's kind of just the wrap, you know, wraparound of what we've been doing. You know, the last time I spoke to the board was 2017, so it's been a couple of years. And when I spoke with them then, I kind of had like a future list of what we'd like to see for athletics. And I think I had like six things on there, and we've accomplished two of the six. So I think that's a pretty good start for the list that we had compiled. So just kind of picking away at that and seeing what we can do going forward.
Great. Any questions for Kim? I don't think so. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Central Office reports. So Dave?
Thank you, Tammy. And first to the principals and Kim, thanks for being here and doing your reports. You are free for the evening unless you want to hang around with us. So please, please understand that there will be no judgment if your face disappears. Same thing for Central Office folks after we're, after we're done with our reports momentarily. My report to the board, the written report, hopefully you saw, was linked to student enrollment. You'd asked me for an update on that. And just for the sake of the community, I will share that information verbally so that some of that is out there. In the big picture, there are some things that we need to be aware of as a district. First, the legislature passed, and I believe the governor's signing this week, a, a bill that holds all districts harmless across the state for any changes to enrollment that occurred during the 2021 school year. That's because enrollment in districts all across the, the state of Vermont is fluctuating mightily. Homeschool applications are significantly up. Obviously, the pandemic is at the center of that. So the good news is, on the finance side, there are, there are not negative ramifications to be seen related to actual student enrollment. In terms of our enrollment, in the big, big picture, district-wide, we're down about 10% in terms of the number of students that are enrolled in our schools. And I shared with you those numbers and how they shake out. Interestingly, our little mountain school in Shrewsbury is up nearly 10% in enrollment, where other, other schools are down in different degrees. We can really point to two things that are the cause of that decrease enrollment. I would suggest they are primarily due to our remote learning status and some families deciding that they need different options or different paths for their families in the pandemic with us in remote learning. And as I've shared with you, the, the controversy around flags and families deciding that they need different paths or opportunities for their children related to the flag decisions. We do expect that when we do return to in-person instruction, when that occurs, that we will see a bump back, probably, if I were guessing, we'll probably see students come from the homeschool realm and the remote learning-focused realm before we see students return to us if they left due to the decisions around flags, just because there, there are different reasons for those decisions. So curious to see how that plays out over time. But the good news is that on the financial side, there are no effects that will be tied to the status of our enrollment. Any questions that I could answer related to what I've shared with you tonight? Great, thank you.
Okay, so Brian, that's you on the line, right, to give us an update?
Absolutely. I put a lot of details in my report. I'll try and just really quickly give you the summary. B J had asked for an update on, on assessments and how we're looking at that this fall. Really, the first thing we were thinking about was timing. We didn't know when or if we'd be able to come back, so we didn't want to push the decision. So we did want to do something this fall. The next thing we looked at was really the recommendations from providers of our two big fall assessments that we would use, following the recommendations, guidelines from them, and figuring out really how could we get results that are, that are going to be somewhat reliable, somewhat valid. We know they're not going to be perfect, but based on these recommendations, we do know there's something that we can, we can use to inform our practice or instruction. And then really, the last piece we looked at was, you know, let's, let's speak with our principals, our admin, and our educators about what are some of the things that are actually most relevant, most useful to actually measure in the fall so that we can do what's best for our learners based on what we can find out. Questions?
Any questions for Brian? I don't see anybody with any questions, Brian. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
And then Andrew, hi.
Hi, good to see everyone. So, you know, we're about a month in to our remote learning situation. And so far, the module system seems to be working pretty well. That said, something that I'll be putting out either this week or next week is a survey to teachers to gather feedback around what is working and what is not working with regards to kind of our overall module instructional kind of method to try to make improvements with regards to that. And we'll continue to do that throughout this year because we know that it's an imperfect system and that we can always improve upon it. So that's one component. Another thing that I've been working on is putting together a professional development menu for teachers. A survey was sent out a week or two ago to really identify what teachers' needs are and what modality they would like to engage with professional learning. And overwhelmingly, a lot of the need is still around technology. So we'll be putting some, together some things there. And a couple other topics that kind of relate to pedagogy came up, such as universal design for learning. And so we'll be providing both kind of sessions like this that are live and also asynchronous sessions that would be developed into a module so that teachers could engage in kind of a self-paced learning process. And so we'll provide kind of a mixture of those two things. Additionally, looking to the November early release day, that's going to be a day focused on kind of curriculum-related topics. And the focus of that is going to be around guaranteed and viable curriculum, which is something that we started talking about last year and that will be continuing to move forward this year. And really, the, kind of the purpose of that is to really prioritize what it is we're going to teach and assess to really shrink the curriculum, because we know we only have a certain amount of time. And we have both our content and transferable skills that we want to teach and assess. And so we need to kind of make some decisions around what it is that we really want to identify as essential and what we want to identify as maybe a supporting performance indicator or learning target. So we'll be setting up a process for that. I've been working with Deborah Gardner-Bosh to start to develop what a product like that would look like and also to set up a process.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Any questions for Andrew? Okay, thank you. Coral, how are you?
Hi, Tammy, and well, thank you. So I don't have like too much new content to report other than just that we're continuing on our path to be providing in-person services at Mill River. That's going really well. I sort of compare it to, you know, if you ever have had like a birthday party at your house for your kids or you've had any kind of party at your house, there's all this excitement with the parties there. But then you have to do all that cleanup afterward. And so the cleanup part that I'm sort of working on now is sort of the paperwork ramifications of having to do a lot of I E P amendments and things like that. So unfortunately, we're kind of trying to buckle down right now and do the not-so-fun paperwork shifts that we have to now take care of as a result of having served kids the, the way that we did, which was great. And then lastly, I just, I had put it in my report, but the special ed service plan is due to the Agency of Education on or before October 15th. So Stan, as always, has been very helpful. We're trying to, to get that plan hopefully done by Monday or so so that we can get it off to them. But I'm not really seeing where we're going to make any appreciable changes either way to the special ed funding side of things for the next fiscal year. So that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, great. Thank you, Coral. Any questions for Coral? Okay, thank you. Gary, how are you?
I'm fine, folks. How was everybody? Over the last several months, we've been talking quite a bit about custodial techniques and sanitizing products and all that we'd be using and are using. But I wanted to take the opportunity this time around to provide a lot of details about some of the physical changes that we've been making to the buildings because of, of, you know, the COVID situation we find ourselves in. we find ourselves in and some of the, you know, the operational changes that we're making to how we, you know, control our HVAC systems. So I took an opportunity with each one of the buildings to basically outline the things that we've done. And it's anything from some fairly significant changes to structures where we've added nurse stations and isolation rooms where there was nothing before, essentially taking classrooms and subdividing those, adding new equipment. So there's quite a bit of detail in the report. We did go over it all last night with the Buildings and Grounds Committee, so that several of you are aware of the details at this point in time. So I'd be happy to answer any questions along those lines.
Any questions for Gary? No? Okay. Thank you, Gary. Hi, Carrie, how are you?
Fine, thanks. How are all of you? I shared a report with you and that report is actually the implementation of the Remote Learning Support Plan that we're doing through after-school. And actually, that's gone very well. We're about three weeks in and we have sites at Clarendon and Wallingford that are each averaging about 16 to 18 learners a week. It was a little difficult on the staff at the beginning. The kids came in, quite honestly, kind of numb, kind of quiet. They've been home since March and they've definitely loosened up and gotten very comfortable with all of the protocols. And so that's really been great to see. We've had a lot of very positive feedback from families, from parents, but also grandparents on the support that's that's being offered. And in observing those programs, we'll see 16 or 17 learners in each of the gyms and four teachers that are keeping hopping constantly with us. And so it really is has been a very successful program. We have, in terms of our after-school system, our site directors, as with principals, are continuing on a path toward reopening, you know, preparing from trainings to logistics and the whole bit so that at that time, we'd be ready. And I guess the final note since the report is Dave and I finished the paperwork actually today for the extension of the 21st Century Grant that would be into FY '22. So that seems to have been approved and seems to be a done deal. And we're quite excited about that of having another year after this year of funding.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Questions at all?
Questions? Any questions? I don't see any. Well, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Tammy, can I can I jump in just since we're at the end of the report? And he'll probably be frustrated with me for maybe embarrassing him. But I want to talk about Gary for a moment and I want to talk about his report. I'm flashing back right now to July 1st, 2014. When I started my job, I walked into my office at the old SU building that some of you remember. And on my desk were a big set of plans for what was then the recently bonded Wallingford Elementary School Roofing Ventilation, et cetera, project. And my first thought to myself was, oh, my goodness, I'm in charge of this and needed to quickly figure out where to go with that and how to approach that. You know your our history. When we went through merger, we needed to identify a director of operations and Gary was the guy. If you look through the material that's in Gary's report, it is extensive. It is detailed. It is spot-on. And it's something that I'm proud of and we should all be proud of. When when I asked Gary in a meeting today, I said, hey, Gary, just tell us, where are we relative to be ready, being ready for all the HVAC needs, meeting the requirements, et cetera? And when he can tell me, Dave, we're we're better off than a lot of people are, that's affirming and something that I appreciate hearing. When you look at the pictures that are in Gary's report, just of the physical infrastructure changes, the isolation rooms created at Mill River, new nursing spaces at Mill River and at Wallingford, adaptation that Timothy and Shrewsbury did. Gary and his team have been relentless in making things happen and it's impressive and it's to keep other people safe and have us be ready to go when it's time to go. So again, he'll be mad at me for saying this, but I'm grateful for Gary and what he brings us. And I just want to make sure that that's shared publicly.
Thank you, Dave. I think we we all echoed those sentiments. So we will move on to Stan. And Stan has some business manager healthcare stuff that he has to discuss with us.
Sure. Just to give you a quick background, the statewide health plan that was negotiated for most employees did not include two groups of employees, one myself, business managers, and the other group was considered what they call confidential employees, which would be the business office support staff and the central office support staff. So what I'm asking tonight is that the board make a motion to to offer health plans to the business manager and the business office support staff and central office support staff. There will actually be two motions because there are two separate plans. The first motion would be an offer to the business manager to of the VI health plans, VI health and benefits and employer cost-sharing plan to the business manager under the licensed employees category of the statewide health plan. And the second motion would be to offer the support staff, the again, the VI health benefits and employer cost-sharing plan of the statewide non-licensed employees.
Okay, George?
I will make the motion in the first instance to offer the plan to the business manager that is equal to the licensed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I second that. Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the health insurance plan offering for the business manager, please give me a thumbs up. Anyone opposed to that? Please say no. Hearing none. Anyone abstaining? Okay. And now, George?
Yes, I would move that we offer the support staff, the business office and the support staff in the central office, a health plan similar to folks of an equal category from the state contract.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that? Thank you, BJ or Liz, whoever, and pick your choice. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the offering of health insurance to the confidential employees, please give me a thumbs up. Anyone opposed? Please say no. And anyone abstaining? There you go. Did you need anything else, Stan?
No, no, thank you.
Just health insurance, right? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to committee reports now. So we'll do personnel first and Maria. Oops, sorry, George, what?
Just a quick question for Stan. Stan, are you going to be around when we get to the report on pay orders and stuff?
Oh, yeah, I always look forward to these meetings. I stay right to the end.
Okay, I'll say my question before then. Thank you.
Okay, sorry, George.
George, he was clicking disconnect like right here. I can see.
I expected it much.
So we'll move on to committee reports and Maria is going to fill in for Len, who couldn't be with us for the meeting this evening. So Maria.
Hi. So I have two things. The first one is I'd like to make a motion to approve contracts for Randall Cameron as a one FTE custodian and for Mercedes Rideout as one FTE general educator.
Okay, is there a second to those motions? Thank you, George. Any discussion? Questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving those two contracts, please say aye, a thumbs up. Anyone opposed? Please say no. Anyone abstaining? Okay, congratulations to both those individuals. We welcome them to the Mill River family.
And second, the evaluation of the superintendent is finally complete. And Len and I will be making an appointment to sit down with Dave to talk about it with him. And following that, we'll come back to you with a more complete report to the full board.
Okay. Any questions for Maria for policy?
Personnel.
Personnel, good and disgraceful, sorry. It's been a long day. Okay, then we'll move on to BJ for policy. See, my my thing just got mixed up. That's all. It's a good save. Go ahead, BJ.
Okay, so we've had two meetings this month already. Primary focus has been the flag policy. And I think it is, I really, really like where it has come to. And I think it's going to be a very supportive ed policy, especially around supporting the students and supporting the curriculum. We still decided on another, we did need a third meeting. Or wait, I think we had one meeting this month. We're going to have a second meeting this month on the 13th at 5:00. And hopefully, we'll have something that we can bring to the board on the 21st.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for BJ? Okay, negotiations. Dave, do you want to just fill us in for Adrian?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And Amy or Amy, Tammy, just so you know, I did let Adrian know where we are because I know she's trying to join us shortly. Negotiations, we had a session scheduled with the teachers for Monday afternoon, but that had had to be canceled due to some scheduling conflicts that existed within the group. That session has been rescheduled for next Monday and be sitting down the board and the teacher team to see how things progress. We also have scheduled a negotiation session for support staff. We last met with them in either late February or early March before the shutdowns occurred. And we're getting back to the table of support staff. So that is scheduled for the 22nd of October at 4 o'clock. So with any luck, we'll be progressing through a negotiation process and hopefully work our way towards some settlements and get those packed up and put away. So stay tuned.
Great, thanks, Dave. Buildings and grounds, John?
So Gary's report was rather thorough on some subjects. We also discussed the impending stormwater regulation changes and how that's going to affect us. We're relatively certain that the only school that has more than three or more acres of impervious surface is Mill River, but we've got to get some measurements to make sure that that's correct. The stormwater regulations, for those who don't know, as of December 1st of this year, the stormwater regulate, new stormwater regulations take effect, which will increase the requirements for anyone who has impervious surface. An impervious surface can be roof material. It can be asphalt. It can actually also be a clay infill because that is considered impervious. So once you add all those things up, Mill River, I think, based on what I can get for Vermont's GIS mapping on web website that they have, I think we have between seven and eight acres of impervious surface just in Mill River alone. Current estimates are $50,000 to $75,000 per acre for the mitigation that's going to be required. There's been some hints coming from Montpelier that there could be money available to help with that, but nobody knows where it's going to come from yet. The timeline seems like it's fairly stretched out. But when you have a whole bunch of schools, businesses, and even individuals who are going to be scrambling for and competing for the time of the same engineers and the same folks in Montpelier who are going to be looking at these plans and approving them, it's really not all that long. So we are starting to think about it now. The final implementation of everything, we've got, I think, about five years. I think, is that right, Gary? You can go nod or shake your head if you want. I think it was about a five-year.
Yeah, we first had an 18-month window. There's there's two phases to it. One is an 18-month window and then then there's a five-year implementation period after that.
After that, okay. I couldn't remember whether that was included. The 18 months was included in the five years or if it was additional. So anyway, it seems like it's it's a long ways away, but it's really not that far once you think about all the things that are going to go into this. So we do have that in our in our minds and we're trying to keep track of that. One other thing that Gary shared with us is that we're still looking for two custodians in the district, full-time custodians. The some of the folks that are normally custodians are now pulling bus duty. And given that we have had to split the routes back up into elementary and high school, separate routes plus Stafford, plus sports and potentially field trips at some point, who knows? Gary has just enough people to cover what we have right now. If anybody is out sick or off or whatever, there's possibility that bus routes may need to be combined or possibly even not happen on a given day, which is obviously not an ideal situation and would be sort of a last resort, I would assume. But it is something that's looming and we've been talking about this for a long time. And it may sound like a broken record, but it isn't getting any better. So other than Gary's, what Gary had in his report, that's about it for what happened at our meeting yesterday. We decided that since our next meeting would be election day, that we would not do that. And that if we if something came up that we needed to have a meeting, we could do it as a special meeting at some other point during the month. But for right now, we would plan on not having a meeting in November. And that's all I got.
Great, thanks, John. Any questions for John? Okay, we'll move on to community engagement. Maria.
Hi, I I take responsibility for community engagement, having a fairly long lag lately. I've had a lot of other things going on. But we are going to have a meeting right now, tentatively scheduled, unless you hear otherwise, for Tuesday, the 20th at 6:30 PM. And that will be via Google Meet.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions from Maria? Oh, okay. Liz, finance?
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we have the following payroll and pay order warrants for review. For payroll, we have payroll dated September 16th in the amount of $5,905.79. We have regular payroll dated September 25th in the amount of $537,934.42. And finally, we have regular payroll dated October 1st in the amount of $6,056.55, excuse me, for a grand total of $549,896.76. For pay warrants from the general fund, we have a warrant in the amount of $595,151.12. Also from the general fund, we have a pay warrant in the amount of $8,933.08. From food service, we have a pay warrant in the amount of $12,245.10. And finally, for after-school program, we have a pay warrant for $675.54 for a total of $617,484.04. And I move we accept the payroll and pay order warrant as presented.
Is there a second? Thank you. Discussion? George, Doug, either of you?
I, yes. First off, I reviewed the payroll and pay orders and everything seemed to be in order. I do have some general questions for our incredibly talented business manager and also one question for our superintendent. So somebody keep him awake. Stan, as I was looking at some of the items like Earl's Truck Service and Tuffalo's Trash, what I was curious about is the overall picture of our current operation and situation versus what we were over a year ago. What kind of total increase in expense? What kind of total increase in expenses are we receiving other than the obvious things that, like we saw in Gary's report? So you don't have to answer that immediately, Stan, if you need some time. But I'm just curious as to what it's causing us in terms of adjustments to deal with this situation in the future.
Just to answer that, generally, you're just saying, what is an increase in costs under the current conditions that we have? Right now, we don't really have any increase in costs. Any increase in costs that we have for, you know, is, is, would be covered with the grant money that we have applied for. So we're not really seeing any great increase in any other areas, you know, in the budget.
Thank you, that's good news. Next question for Stan is, I was looking at the Green Mountain items. What kind of activity are we getting out of our solar panels? Are you happy with that? Is it going according to plan?
I would say we haven't finished a year yet, right, Gary, in regards to a full cycle?
We haven't gotten through a full cycle, but I'm happy with what we're seeing. You know, it's nice to see credits come through on our bills on occasion. You know, we're banking solar hours over the summer. We've got the, the way it's all set up. Each one of our buildings gets some credit for the solar panels that are located at the high school. So I'm happy with what we're seeing.
Thank you. Now for the superintendent. I was looking, the pay orders was the item for the, our sheriff's deputy. What kind of duties have expanded for him in view of our current circumstances?
Yeah, interesting question. Tyler would actually be able to respond better to the day-to-day. But one of the significant increases in what Joe is doing for us is a lot of bus driving work. He's involved on a lot of our bus runs currently with our special ed programming. Tyler, Gary, Kim, and Jen and I had a long meeting today about, as we look at potentially reopening, what the bus routes look like. And Joe needs to be a factor in that for us as a part of his overall role. So he's going to be involved with Mount Holly and Ludlow in particular once we get back to some form of normal schedules. And once students do return to buildings, Joe will be engaged in the work that he always does. George, I would say this is not a topic that we've had a lot of conversation about at the board level. But the nationwide focus on school resource officers tends to be focused negatively on school resource officers arresting students, disciplining students, and engaging in that type of work. One thing I'm proud of about Joe's work with us and the sheriff's department's work with us is our SRO doesn't engage that way. Joe is not involved in disciplinary actions whatsoever. We don't send students off out of school in handcuffs. Our data for how students interact with the school resource officer is not only appropriate, but it's very positive. And I consider him to be a real asset to the school. So the nice thing about him as an individual employee is he's adaptable and flexible and takes on pretty much anything we've got in the moment that we need support with. So he's a person we're pleased to have around.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I got a little bit, I looked at themes George did. Thanks for taking my thunder here for the solar stuff, I appreciate it. I looked at, we have three, three debits in there for solar. One is for $140, one is for $610. And the one that caught my eye is one said solar panels, $20.04. That's where the difference comes in from that standpoint, which is happy. And looking at the payroll down through, in my computer, that's 10 pages long. I'm thinking when it comes to GE having a lot of employees, I think we're pretty close to second place without too much of a problem. But I got all my signatures ready to go. Everything else is fine.
Okay, great, thanks, Doug. So any other discussion on the pay orders or payroll? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the pay orders and payroll as read, please give me a thumbs up. Anyone opposed? Please say no. Any abstentions? Okay, thank you.
Tammy, can I get a financial item that just kind of connects to Stan's work, Gary's work, et cetera? Just not for action, but just want the board and the community to be aware. With the reopening of schools and the HVAC obligations, we've got the savings that our energy efficiency programs are built into, fine for us. We're not going to see a lot of those savings across the course of this year because we'll be pumping in more cold air in the buildings to have more fresh air. So we'll be spending more money heating buildings. We'll be heating school buses the same way because we'll have lots of open windows as we go. So we are ready to save tons of money because of our efficiency projects. But COVID is going to affect that for this particular school year, but we'll be back on track afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Liz, did you have anything else? No, oh, yes, sorry. No, she doesn't, she's done. Thank you, sorry. Okay, we'll move on to transact other legal business. And the one thing that we, before I let George talk, the one thing that we do want to do is to discuss VSBA resolutions, and we need to appoint a voting representative. So I'm going to turn it over to Adrian.
I had sent out the, the VSBA resolution links yesterday, and I was wondering if, and the VSBA had sent all this stuff out previously, but I don't know how many of you open that kind of stuff up. Does anybody have any instructions that I don't? And then we have to get back to who is going to do the voting for that particular. Sorry, I'm in Louisville, and there's helicopters, oddly enough.
Okay, any questions on resolutions, comments, anything? Liz, go ahead.
For whoever is going to do the voting.
I would just like to say that I have not had time to look at what Adrian sent over.
Okay, so.
The, the meeting is on the 29th. So whoever is going to do the voting, we have another meeting between then and now. If something stands out that you, you know, absolutely want not to have anybody pass or that you, you know, want to have us speak and, you know, whoever's doing it strongly in favor or whatever, pass that along. I mean, I'll be happy to hear it. And if Tammy's voting, I don't know if Tammy wants to take on that fun. The only reason I was, I could, does anybody, I mean, I guess we do need to vote on that. I did sit on the resolutions committee for VSBA, so I have at least read them all and discussed them.
Sounds like a good qualifications for being, being moved to be our voting representative for the board. I don't know. Does anyone want to make that motion, George?
I'm making that motion.
Is there a second?
Thank you, George.
Again.
Thanks, Maria. Okay, all those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor of approving Adrian to be our voting representative for the VSBA annual meeting? Resolution issues, please give me a thumbs up. Okay, anyone opposed? You're welcome.
And if you think of anything, feel free.
Okay, thank you. George, did you have anything to add to the transact other legal business portion of the meeting?
Yes, I do. Surprise, surprise. First and foremost, as I listen to all of the principal reports, I have to say I've been, I'm very impressed with the progress that they've been making with the remote learning. And would like to offer my congratulations and thanks to all of them because it sounds, it's a tremendous job that they've undertaken, and I think they're doing very well at it. So that's the first item. Second item is, I've read the information set out by the policy committee with great interest and want to see what your final results will be. But I still think it's going to be a long, hard road that we will be on, on that particular subject. I'm done.
Okay, any other legal business that anyone has? No? Agenda building, what do we have in store for next time? Perhaps we will have a first reading on that flag policy, maybe?
Yeah, I think there's a chance you've got a first reading on a flag policy. Sorry, I'm just making notes as I speak. I was scheduled, or I had myself scheduled to give the board a district goals update at this coming board meeting. If the board would oblige, I'd like to ask for a one-meeting extension on that, just to the first meeting in November. We've got a few things going on right now. And so I'd like to take a little bit more time to prepare that, if that's okay. We will be on the heels, being the second meeting of the month. We don't have any administrative reports for you, and we will have had a board PD session right before that on Title IX, to get you familiar with that for some future policy work. So the second board meeting of the month tends to be our leaner one in normal times. So I think we're about back on track to be there.
Okay, Liz?
I would like the opportunity at our next meeting to publicly apologize to Mr. McFerrin and issue a public statement.
Okay, we can, I don't see that that's a problem. Sure, we'll put that on there. Okay, anything else? Anyone else? Okay, so we do have a need to go into executive session for labor agreements and emergency response measures, so.
Yes, and Tammy, labor agreements need the finding of premature public knowledge disadvantage. The emergency response does not. So you'll just want to, you'll just want to work through that process to get there.
Okay, so will someone make the motion? I think we would all be agreeable that discussing our tactics on labor negotiations in public session would put the board at a substantial disadvantage in negotiations. George, would you make that motion?
I am indeed.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, John. And any discussion on that? All those in favor of that finding, please say aye, give me a thumbs up. Anyone opposed? Okay, and then will someone make the motion to go into executive session for that purpose? And then for the emergency response? Okay, and John will second. Thank you, George and John. Okay, so we are in executive session at 8:01.